Good morning. It is Tuesday, October 29th, 2024. I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If there are no changes, I'll take a motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Then moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's?
Aye.
Now is the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If anyone would like to make public comment and you're online, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Or if you're in the public meeting room, please come forward. And seeing none, we'll close public comment number one. We'll move on to agency reports. We have Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report with Director Kelton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So in front of you, I handed you a sheet here.
You're gonna want to pull that mic in front of you. Yeah.
So handed you a sheet here with the summary. I'd just like to point bullet one. That's between Erin Rewards and myself with the GA. We've centralized, we've used centralized intake process within our office. So that's probably one of the biggest changes that we've implemented here. We started with October. Then we're with that wider network of Story County that has the centralized intake outside of ours. For providing rent and assistance to our clients. And then that also makes a little bit more efficiency where we have shared front window in our office. People coming in are able to do the application if it turns out that they're not able to take the Veterans Affairs. We've already started them. They don't have to restart the paperwork. So that's something that we've done to try to increase the efficiency between VA and GA since we share the space. Completed training for myself and Erin Rewards, we went to the state training. I completed the national training, still waiting for my accreditation so I can log into all the systems. But that's not quite as quick as we would hope. And then VA Van training, went through that process so that I understand it for our office as it's a bit more rigorous. Because you have to get certified to use the GSA vehicle on the federal side. That way, as we have volunteers come in, we have it also now. I can move our van from one side of the parking lot to the other. So when I came in, the previous office, there were two county veteran service officers there. But we were utilizing two systems. So we have eliminated that. That was doubling up work. Now we're only using the software that we have already purchased through the Tyler rather than also using an access database, which is another step towards trying to increase efficiency of the office. We've been able to present one atomic recognition award to one of our veterans in the county. I've got another one sitting on my desk for a 94-year-old gentleman who I just talked to yesterday. So that'll be our second one for the county. And then we had three veterans that attended the Brushy Creek Honor Flight. We've hosted the VA mobile vehicle twice, including this morning. I have it set up through the end of 2025 for them to come every other month. So they are there. They can take appointments by call-in or walk-ins from eight until two. And we've got them there every other month so that people don't have to go down to Des Moines. And then we did the MIA POW Proclamation Day here last month. For assistance that we provided, you can see the breakdown there. But we've provided $2,775 to our veterans through different various means of utility and rent assistance. As far as outreach, we've been attending, I've gone to different Legion meetings, met with the Elks, the Freedom Flight Board. I've got some big shoes to fill in that role as my predecessor was quite active in quite a few of those organizations. I have a giant list on my board and I'm slowly marking them off. My goal within 12 months to hit all the Legions and city councils, but that's the start right there. If you turn to the backside, you'll see statistics. I've grouped these as of the end of October, or excuse me, October 1st, so that they're compartmentalized into quarters. But we have an increase from where the previous director had. And then just showing this so that we can show a trend throughout the year. This is the start, this is the first quarter, which is the first quarter that I've had. To highlight here, the average age of veteran is 62. The war period of veteran is Vietnam, which is a shift. It had been World War II before. And now we're starting to see a lot more of those Vietnam veterans as they're working their way into retirement, come into our office. We've been very busy in our office. We've had a total of 152 cases. And that is not to include random phone calls and some of the walk-ins that aren't really worthy of putting down on a note. That averages between the two people in the office as three people or three to four people per day that's coming in. And at that average, that is about one person or one hour per person that's coming in. So that's roughly half our day is spent directly with somebody in front of our office, no less the paperwork that then follows to get filed. So we have maintained being very busy. Our budget, we started with $150,000. We're down to $105,000. So we've used roughly 30%. And then the next steps that we're doing forward, we want to modernize our webpage. Want to coordinate our presence with the Story County Jail. I've worked with the VA. They have a jail outreach program. And I've worked with the administration at the jail, as that's where I came from before. It seemed like a natural place to start for outreach before it was an on-call system. Here we'll have it where I receive a report every week of who is there. And then am able to go through, go down the list and see if they are wanting to receive any counseling or information that we can provide from the VA. We're doing our supermarket benefits coming up here November 9th. So that's our big event. And then just working to streamline the volunteer program, as I mentioned with the VA. That's where we were and that's where we're going. Are there any questions? That'll complete my brief.
It's a great report. Thank you.
Very busy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Excuse me. Moving on, we have consideration of minutes. I'd move approval.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's?
Aye.
Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second. Then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Consent agenda items. If anyone's, anyone pulling anything from consent?
No, I'd move approval.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Next, we're down to public hearing items. The first one we have is consideration of Resolution 25-29 to enter into a storm sewer easement with the Hunzucker Development Group LLC on the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor.
Good morning.
Morning.
So you have in front of you an easement that is being requested by a developer at the ISU Research Park adjacent to the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor. This is for the development of the lot on the middle roundabout on University. So it's a two-acre lot there that the Research Park has sold to the developer. And they're working through processes with the city on development of that lot. As you're aware, storm sewer, storm water is something that they need to address there. And they have to discharge it in some location. So this easement provides access for them to discharge it into the stream. And so we've worked with them on engineering locations, where to discharge it. So it doesn't impact the stream practices that were put into place when we built the facility. And a number of different things that we've worked with them on. And so the easement that you have in front of you believes is satisfies all of the conservation board's concerns. And is something that the board is happy to do and the Conservation Board has recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm just wondering if this undoes any of the work that the Conservation Board or Department has done in this area?
If it funds any of the work?
Does it undo any of the work that?
Undo, undo. No.
Have done already.
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
It does not. And so that was one of the things that I alluded to, that we were very concerned about where that ties into the stream because we didn't want to damage anything that had been done for stream bank stabilization. One thing that I do need to call out though, that you jogged my memory on. This easement is being, is drafted with a fee of $50,000. A consideration of $50,000 that would come from Hunzucker to the Conservation Board. Let me explain the genesis of that. Normally, we do not charge a fee for easements. And so we're not charging a fee for this. Hunzucker, the developer had two options when it came to stormwater. One of them is the proposed option. The other option was to build the whole development up higher and store that water under the development. Okay, so they do a subterranean storage of stormwater. They'd have to lift the whole development up approximately three feet. And this option that is being presented here for approval eliminates the need for that subterranean storage. And so they can just create a storage basin onsite. It'd be on the south side of their property, a normal stormwater basin. And then that norm would, has a normal discharge. So they are saving a significant amount of money by doing that. And they offered to the Conservation Board a portion of their savings moving forward. And so that's why you see in the agreement, it says for the consideration of $50,000. It's because they're saving that and then they offered to give a portion of that savings to the county.
That's the catch.
There is no catch. There is no catch. You know, I think part of it is, part of it is looking ahead as well. When they develop, assuming they do develop that next lot, the flagpole lot. Then, you know, they have always said that they will contribute toward a county development of a facility off of that. And this may, may be the contribution that will go toward that, but.
But the easement does not say what the 50,000 needs to be used for, could be used for.
There's no totally. Strings attached.
There are no strings attached to it.
No.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? With that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make public comment, I'll ask that you, you're in the public meeting room. You go over to the podium, state your name and address and make your comment. Or if you're online, please raise your hand and both state your name and address for public record. I'm not seeing anyone for public comment for the public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing on that. Are there any additional questions?
I guess I do have one more question. So the $50,000 is, does that, does that go to the Conservation Board? Or does it go to the county?
It was offered to the Conservation Board.
Have you talked, have you talked with Crystal or the county attorney's office?
She's reviewed the easement, so I'm not sure what your genesis of your concern?
Just concern over if it's, if it is payment for the easement. Does the Conservation Board doesn't own property? The county does. And so my concern would be later on down the road, getting tangled up in where that money goes.
So I believe the intention is to put it into the Friends of Conservation Trust Fund? And then when and if there are improvements done to the park, that that be drawn directly from the trust fund?
Sounds like we better check with the county attorney because Supervisor Basil brings up a good point. So can we, can you, basically if we approve this today, it's with the understanding that we'll follow the county attorney's advice on that.
Yeah, because I don't see anything specifically in any of it saying where the funds will go. So.
And it is tied to the easement.
Anything else?
Nope.
Is there a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25.29.
A second. Then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's?
Aye.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we have consideration ordinance 320, amending Chapter 8, Urban Renewal of the Story County Code of Ordinances. Good morning, Leanne.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The ordinance 320 before you for second consideration is probably one of the most straightforward ordinances we've done in a while. This is removing properties from Chapter 8, Urban Renewal of the Story County Code of Ordinances that contain wind turbines that have been removed from the property as well. So they are no longer physically on the site. And so we need to remove them from the table from which revenue is derived from our Chapter 8 Urban Renewal Chapter. Just since first consideration, even prior to first consideration, we have not received any public comment. Given that, staff does recommend approval on second consideration. And we ask that you waive third and final consideration. Are there questions?
Any questions?
No.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments on ordinance 320, amending Chapter 8, the Urban Renewal Story County Code of Ordinances, please come to the podium here in the meeting room. Or if you're online, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any further comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
I would move approval of ordinance 320, amending Chapter 8, Urban Renewal of Story County Code of Ordinances on second consideration and waive third consideration.
Second. Then moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's?
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, next we'll move on to first consideration, ordinance 321 and ordinance amending Chapter 32 of the Story County Code of Ordinances. Good morning, Marcus and Andrea.
Good morning, board.
Morning.
So as you all know, there has been some construction happening at 580th and Highway 30. The construction is pretty much completed. So as part of this process, we were asked to name, rename some of that, those changes that happened there. So that first image is that intersection. The next one is the general location of the county. And the next one shows where the new names and streets are kind of being shown. It's kind of how it works. And then the next one, kind of closer up. So South Teller is going to be extended down to where it intersects with Highway 30. 580th will continue south of there. 241st Street will continue from the Commercial District on the south side of 30th all the way over to 580th. And then Turing Street is being proposed as the new essentially frontage road. That's going to come from the couple of churches, the DOT, all the way. And that's going to extend all the way out to 590th. And the small section of 580th, that's pretty much dead center in the map, is just going to stay the same. After working with the city and working with Darren, the best option for that little stretch was to leave it as 580th so that their addresses don't change. And there'll never be anything that really changes in that area. With that being said, there's a total, the memo says four addresses are changing. It's actually five. But the next one shows all five of the addresses that will be changed. So there will be, currently there's a property that takes access off of 580th. It'll take access off South Teller because of that realignment. They've shifted it over. So there's new access there. And then the rest, three of those are, or two of those are church. One is the DOT facility that's right there. And one is a dwelling that now doesn't have access off of Highway 30 because they just took out that access and she'll be accessing off Turing Street. So again, we worked through this with Darren and the City of Ames. Since it's within two miles and some of this crosses into their boundary, all those things. So we all just worked together on it. This is what we came up with and can't leave names on, or roads unnamed. So that's how we do our 911 addressing. So it's very important. So staff is recommending approval of this and possible just waiving the second and third consideration. We had someone come in this morning. She had a question for the DOT though. One of her accesses is now kind of split and we directed her back to the DOT because they're the ones that did all the realignment, so.
So her question was more about her access, not necessarily about the naming of the street?
Correct. Yep.
Where did the name Turing Street come from?
So the City of Ames has a list of all of their proposed streets in, for new namings. And in the industrial area, they have scientists just generally within kind of industrial areas. And so we had the list and went through it and Turing was what was picked. So.
And it's the whole, I'm trying to look at the proposed name map.
Yep, one second.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's the whole dark blue, not just that small little.
That small thing is just a nut, that's the access of one of the people that's, is changing. But that long one, yep, that goes from there all the way to the edge at 590th where.
It didn't have a name before?
No, that's a brand new road. It didn't exist. Nothing. So where you see the purple, starting on the west side of that map, that's where the old frontage that started to get you into DOT and those two church, that's where that started. And that was all farm field until DOT came through and did their thing, so.
Got you. And the naming came from the county input, the City of Ames and the DOT or just the county and the city?
County and city. Ames, or the DOT doesn't.
Okay.
Alan Turing.
Yeah.
Computing.
Yep.
Other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 320, amending Chapter 302 of the Story County Code of Ordinances. If you're in the public meeting room, please go to the podium. Please state your name and address for public record. And if you're online, please raise your hand. We'll call on you and we'll ask for you to do the same protocol. So, and I see somebody who'd like to come up and make public comment.
Yeah, my name is Randy Breckie and I live in the area of the new, the road and the renaming and stuff. So when the map came out, I just have asked several people about the Turing name. And there's been a lot of confusion, like, did you say Turing or Turing or? And so I'm just proposing that we name it Nightingale, which is also another famous female scientist, mathematician, nurse that actually has multiple honors under her name. And so, yeah, you're welcome to look that up. But it's, seems a little maybe unique that I care about the name. But I'm just concerned that when we tell people where to go or the address, that they're going to be confused about the, what did I say? Turing or Turing? And so hence my request.
Thank you. Appreciate your input. Yep, I see that we do have a couple of people online. Mark, if you'd just please, for our record, state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Mark Duvic. I am the Operations Director at Cornerstone Church, which is 56829 US Highway 30. And we have multiple thousands of constituents who attend and then others who are consistently mailing things in, some who only mail about once a year. And so I'm just curious if there is any other option to keep the address the same. I don't know from a city planning perspective how to do that. But I know for us and then also the other church next to us and potentially even the DOT, it would probably be very helpful if the address didn't change. And then I have a follow-up question if that doesn't happen.
Marcus, did you want to respond to that? And then we can follow up with them or Andrea?
So the name has to change because that, that access, that access of Highway 30 is, is gone. So for emergency services purposes, they will not know what access to go to if that address stays the same. So it does have to change.
Okay, thank you. Mark, you had a follow-up then?
Yeah, the letter that we received talked about a 30-day grace period or a 30-day, trying to think of what it was, a 30-day waiting period is, do we need to contact anyone other than the postal service? I imagine there's probably going to be a long period of time where people will still be sending mail to 56829 US Highway 30. Do we need to work with anyone other than the post office to make sure that mail gets forwarded to the new Turing Street address?
No, you just work with your postal service and we'll, as the county will take care of and reach out with how to get the new 911 markers in place and all of those things.
That answer your question, Mark?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have Betsy. And if you could state your full name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Betsy Schmidt. I live in Ames, but I operate Foundations Learning Center out of this space at Cornerstone Church. So that same address that Mark was talking about. And I do, I have a question about the naming as well because we do, we do contact EMS occasionally as a center with young children with allergies. And so I have a couple of concerns with the name, that it may be miscommunicated or misinterpreted or cause a delay in that EMS service because we are outside of Ames. We do have to contact the county before we contact Ames. And so for our kiddos who may need that emergency support, I have a couple of like, if it takes them longer to interpret or longer to get here, is that a concern at all from the naming committee?
Andrea, Marcus, do you want to respond?
Yeah, we've all been, everyone who has seen this has been involved in street naming. And no one has brought up that as a concern. So and this, again, based from the list we received from the City of Ames, their naming conventions. So they've all been gone through their, whatever their process is for how naming of streets works regarding things like that, so.
But this is your, this is your first time hearing anybody having concerns over the specific name?
Yes.
What other input would you have had though, besides the public hearing today for concerns on the clarity or pronunciation?
I mean, we sent those letters over a week ago and I'm just now hearing people having concerns. So it's kind of, I don't have anything else for you right now because this is the first I'm hearing any concerns, so.
Well, Alan Turing was a British mathematician. Had nothing to do with Iowa, much less Story County. I think that's kind of interesting. I would have chosen something quite different. So, but I don't know that it's a big deal. I don't know where we got Teller, for example. Wasn't here then, but I wish they had thought of something that was closer. I mean, we've got a lot of great scientists who've come from Iowa State, for example. So why a British mathematician? That doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Randy, did you want to make another comment?
Yeah, if I could, yeah, I agree with obviously the name change. But in regards to the address, we live on Lincoln Highway and there. um in regards to the address, um we live on Lincoln Highway and there there my wife and I, our address was changed from Nevada to Ames. And when that happened, our old address was abolished. And so the mail transfer was very, very, very difficult. So in regards to Mark Duvic's question for Cornerstone Church and those other churches, I guess I would like to know perhaps how will that transfer take place? Because in our case, you know, the typical American, we've had multiple address changes and they just forward the mail for approximately a year, which gives you a fair amount of time to acclimate through that. But in the case of ours, when we come to Nevada Post Office to say, where's our mail? They said, they told us, come and pick it up. It's in a basket and we'll just keep collecting it. But we no longer deliver it because your old address has been abolished. It wasn't like we moved. The old address was abolished. So I don't know if that's the case here. But if it is, um it could be quite difficult for Cornerstone Church and the amount of mail that comes through that post office box or that address.
Thank you.
That's good to know.
So the city is not changing for those addresses. They're not being annexed. Going from a position that they were not annexed to annexed. Um so this is a different situation than than that, so.
I don't doubt, I understand that when one moves or has an address change anymore, it's even, it's a lot more difficult to change things. You know, you have to go online with a lot of things. I think both Cornerstone and the and the business that are there do have databases and probably can make sure to get all that information out, you know, to their constituents and their customers. But yeah, you do need to wait, you know, you do have to watch it and you'd have to make sure whenever you get, you know, forwarded things that, you know, get those redone. So I, the the county doesn't have anything to do with that, unfortunately. It's the post office. So we can't, I don't know what we can do if we have to, if it's no longer on on U S thirty, I can't have a U S thirty address. That's, that's, I think, the bottom line I'm hearing.
Yeah, I I think it's a good question, though. Will the address? Will their former address be abolished as far as the U S Post's Post Office is concerned, which I know is not us, not ours at all. Would be good information for folks to have. Probably for them to be proactive in talking to the post office. Letting them know what the new address is right away and figuring bring out how it would be delivered or picked up or whatever, and how long that transition may be.
Right. And that's why we sent notice last week about all of this, so.
Any other questions, comments? I, uh, Betsy, did you have another comment? I see your hand still up or was it just still raised from?
I put it back up. I did have a quick question. Um with the like thirty days from if it were approved, we have thirty days before it would transition or it would be transitional. Do we, would we be communicated with like when it officially is changed with EMS? Uh because if in that thirty day window, we needed to contact them for something, which address would I say on that EMS call? Um do you have information about that at this time?
So when the new addresses actually get assigned, um I send everything over to um a GIS database that feeds directly into all of the emergency services systems. Um so once that goes in, um that point will also be there and I can work through um my contact of the GIS or the nine one one coordinator about how long do you want to leave these two here and then at some point, but the system will show EMS where where the address is.
But both addresses?
So in the Or any, yeah, before any actual, anything's removed, we'll confirm that everything is working properly, that everyone understands. Um and that the system is showing how it should before we would remove anything, so.
And will she be, will, will, will people be notified? When
Prior to that, yes.
Address is completely out of the
Yeah, we'll send out again. We like, we send notices for pretty much everything we do, so.
All right. Any other comments before I close the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
I guess I I have a question about how difficult it might be to choose a different name. Since this was a name chosen from a list. Like what, what would that?
What can you direct us and we'll, we'll do what you direct us to do?
Knowing that we would have to resend notice with different maps and republish in the newspapers too, just keep that in mind.
Certainly, certainly understand that.
Not crazy about it, but I don't think we need to, it's a short street. I don't know, we need to hold it up for that. So you sent out something about a week ago, correct?
Yeah, so there was two things that went out. One went um it just had, hey, you're within a quarter mile like we do for everything. And then one was, hey, you're in a quarter mile. Also, you're taking access off of something that's going to be changing. So
People got two notifications, what you're saying?
Well, it was all in one envelope and I put in there, it was very clear, like that there's two things in here. Um and that's how these people know that their address is changing. So it worked.
Okay, and that was the, the only people whose addresses were changing were the ones that were on your slide.
Those five.
Basically, you've heard from all of them?
Now, well, the one I haven't heard from the South Teller one or the other church, because both of those were from the learning centers in Cornerstone. Uh we did that. So I just haven't heard from the other church and the DOT is they, they did the project, so they know it's changing.
Okay, not to be difficult, but the notice that that is sent to people. Does it say you can respond to this mailing or come to the public hearing to share your input? So that's, I guess that is my concern about.
We got an email, the one of the one, the fifth one that's actually on there. She emailed us and I don't know if my email was on, or did she just email planning and development? So yeah, that mean they reached out to the one person that reached out prior to this meeting was last week this morning.
And it, was that a concern about the name or was that the one that was more the DOT issue or?
Uh it was they had removed her access, but we didn't know. She was the one right there on, uh we're touring bends. She still had an access that I saw last week before I sent out the notices, but they actually ended up taking that out. So she contacted and we got a new address for her.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I was just asking to kind of gauge, did everybody basically who got it have a chance to respond? And it sounds like we've heard from everybody.
Well, and it, it went out to not just those five.
Oh.
It went out to twenty eight? Twenty eight, there's more than twenty property, twenty eight property owners within a quarter mile. All got the same letter that I've, you know, the people that are here today also got it.
But five of them would have an address change.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I know I'm being difficult, but um it, let's say you heard from all these people before today. What, would that have impacted leaving the name? I mean, I, I think we've heard from several people, they're concerned that the name is
If you, if you want us to approach, I'm not going to get into that because there's a lot of things that could come from that. If you want us to look at changing that, then if you give us that direction, we will do that. Um but that's that's where I'm at with that.
We also don't know names on the list, so it could be worse. I've closed the public hearing. Right, it's, it's not till we make a motion on here and that's why we had the public, the public hearing for the comments.
I think you, uh Marcus, did you ask that we waive second and third consideration?
Yeah, yeah, because coming in here, we hadn't you know, heard from anyone, so.
Yeah.
And I think I gave option three or two was setting a second for November fifth. If you didn't want to wait, like, I wasn't just assuming that.
Well, let's um I think where I would tend to, to to look is the option two just to make sure that we've heard from everybody. So I would move that we approve ordinance three twenty one, amending chapter um thirty two of the Story County Code of Ordinances and set second consideration for November fifth.
Second. They moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens, aye.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of resolution twenty five dash thirty two, amending the urban renewal plan, Story County Urban Renewal Area.
I'm going to breeze through these first few slides as you've seen them several times, but um just wanted to reiterate for today's public hearing, uh our urban renewal program has three elements, the urban renewal plan, Story County Urban Renewal Area, which you are um asked to be, you are being asked to take action on today to amend. The second is chapter eight, urban renewal, the code of ordinances, which a couple here, public hearings ago, you just modified today. And then the economic development process and policies. The urban renewal plan, um actually that you'll be acting on today was first adopted in twenty eleven. Um it consistent with chapter four oh three of the code of Iowa. Um it's intended to guide the county in promoting economic development. Chapter eight again is um the urban renewal chapter of the code of ordinances. And your action taken today was to amend chapter eight to remove those parcels. Um those changes are also incorporated in the, in the draft plan that we have before you. And then the policies and procedure or process and policies were adopted in October twenty twelve. Um this is the kind of standard op, standard operating procedure that the board supervisors uses and direct staff to use um to really guide and evaluate uh economic development projects. That is the process we fo- follow to get to this point today. Uh in the economic development process and policies are established priority, priorities. Those are on this slide. Um not going to read it for the benefit, but uh again, these are in the adopted policies. And then within the policies themselves, two are five different project types that can come through um and request funding through Story County to the board of supervisors. Um those are on the slide as well, but I do want to point out that all those before you today do fall under the public land and trail improvement category. Um it is also expected in the policies that applicants provide a match of twenty five percent at least. Um in order to come forward to the board of supervisors. Again, it's an expectation. It's not a clear requirement. Um it just asks, they do provide evidence of that. So that gets us to um just in a snapshot uh in time of the projects that had been received approval by the board of supervisors. Um I do want to note that if you look up there on the slide, it looks like the program ended in twenty twenty. Uh we took a hiatus between twenty and twenty one to current because of a court case that was working its way through. Um with that resolution, we, we did, uh the board of supervisors did direct staff to advertise and and accept applications this spring. When she gets us to this point, sorry, my voice is starting to go. Um you see on this slide, every community except for the city of Colo has participated in, in the county's urban renewal area program. Um about one point four million dollars has gone from Story County to these communities. And the percentages are on the screen as well for you to see how those are divided amongst the different communities. Um the, in addition to the, the monies that have gone to our communities in Story County, a number of Story County projects themselves have received funding through our TIF program. And these are incorporated into our urban renewal plan. So that's why it's important to bring them up as well. Um about seven point five million dollars of the county's TIF funds have gone towards the projects. Um they have been Dakens Lake, Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor, and then Prairie Rail Trail, and then Bike Lane Improvements, Long Country Club Road. And then there's a quarter mile of five ninetieth uh where the intersection is with Highway thirty, that was paved as well. Those were some of the initial projects. As you know, you did amend the chapter eight urban renewal, that does fall within the plan too. That was action done today. So that gets us to um thank you. Uh where we are for the applications, we received five applications from the city of Collins, Zering, Slater, Story City and the city of Nevada. Um they did come and present uh the applications to the board of supervisors over the past couple of months. We've held a consultation meeting with affected taxing entities. Uh various different meetings before the board of supervisors for discussion and direction. I did highlight um the city of Collins request. They did re, initially request a hundred sixty seven thousand two hundred fifty dollars. When we came before you as staff um for direction, we recommended the ru- removal of the dog park, which the board did agree with. Um this also removes another element that we were notified by conservation that um is being paid by a different source. So that would no longer be using, utilizing TIF funds from Story County. So that is why that number is even lower than the last time we were before you. Um so um then the city of Zering is requesting sixty three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. City of Slater, a hundred sixty eight thousand dollars. City of Story City, two hundred sixty five thousand dollars. And we were asked by the board um to, to reach out to city of Story City to ascertain whether or not those were public funds or a foundation funds. I did email the city manager, um city administrator, Mark Jackson. He did indicate that they are city funds that are going towards a match. Um so we do have that in writing from Mr. Jackson. And then the city of Nevada is requesting a hundred thousand dollars. So the total amount that is being requested for funding for fiscal year twenty twenty six would be seven hundred, seven hundred thirty eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. That amount is important to note because this amount, whatever's award is actually is what is put in the plan as what's adopted. And then this is what gets certified as TIF debt by December first. Next slide, please. So the proposed amendments before you this morning are um one, removing properties um in the urban renewal area, those wind turbines, striking those. Adding the new projects, so those five projects sequentially, they're numbered. So forty, forty five through forty nine. I think I got that wrong, through fifty, they're sequentially numbered at just an appearance. And then they're actually added again as a bulleted list. Um that's just the layout that was originally drafted as, and so we've kept that. Um updating the charts on chapter seven, that is in the plan that shows um our current TIF indebtedness and then what we are proposing to assume with the projects, if that seven hundred forty thousand dollars is awarded today are approved in the plan to be awarded. Exhibit A is updated to remove the turbines that have been decommissioned. This is a table of all, of all the properties from which revenue is derived. And then exhibit B is the map that shows locations to be added. And that is, this image is really difficult to see, honestly, on any scale unless you're very, very large, but they're numbering. Um you can look up around Story City. You can look up around Story City, you see the numbers in there. In the plan itself, you can zoom in online and see these numbers, it does have a table to go with them. So with that. This slide shows our recommendation and your alternatives for the Board of Supervisors. This is a public hearing, acting on a resolution. We do recommend the first alternative that you amend the urban renewal area plan. Or, or urban renewal plan, Story County Urban Renewal Area. You do have two other alternatives too, you can amend those amounts or amend other elements of the plan. And with that, direct staff to make those changes and then amend that or that resolution as well to go hand in hand with those proposed changes. Or last, you can deny the resolution and not approve it, which will not amend the plan and no projects will be awarded this year. It's a little bit different because normally we have all ordinances and second and third readings, this is just one, one consideration of resolution. Are there questions for staff?
Any questions before I open the public hearing? No, no, okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, if anyone in the public meeting room would like to make public comment. Please come forward to the podium and state your name and address, or if you're online, please raise your hand and we'll call on you and to do the same. To state your name and address your comment. All right, seeing none, I guess we'll close the public hearing. Any further questions, comments? Nope. Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of revolution, resolution twenty-five dash thirty-two amending urban renewal plan. Story County Urban Renewal Area.
Second. They moved in seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Edens, aye. Thank you both.
Thank you, we will send out the award notices probably later this week.
I do have a question. I was recently approached by township trustee, asking if they could apply for these funds. No, they couldn't obviously for this year, but could they apply for next year? Is there a reason a township, a township could not apply?
There is, there is not, there's, there is, we, we've even have school districts apply in the past. There's not a specific, any specific language that says this is who the applicant shall be.
How would they know that they're able to apply then?
The board could direct us next year when we come forward with the policies to reach out to township trustees.
Please remind us of that when we should do that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on, we've got discussion and consideration of bid award to graphite construction group for the Story County Sheriff's Office Range House Construction for seven hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Good to see you again this, this week, trying to set a record for how many consecutive weeks I get to come up here and talk, so.
You did that a few weeks ago, you're.
Yeah, yeah, we're. Right along, yeah, so kind of basic, you know, bid award for the range house. Kind of seeing my memo, we did receive some good bids on this, total of six. As you can tell, there's a very wide range from top to bottom, so that is kind of why we spent an extra week before you seen us come back with the recommendation, just we like to read. When we get into these situations, we like to reach out to that low bid contractor, make sure that they didn't miss something that they're comfortable with their bids so that everybody's on the same page, we did that. Got their list of subcontractors. Jeff and I spoke, I think what we come down, inclusion was is that graphite was doing the majority of the work with their own staff in lieu of subcontracting out a lot of the work, so I think that equates to their lower cost, so.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so. That's what we're here today, we didn't find anything that would lead us to not recommend awarding the bid to graphite construction. And the alternate add was on the east side, there's a canopy. We kind of left that as an alternate, leaving it as a gravel area in lieu of concrete, but with the overall cost of the project and the alternate add of six thousand dollars for the concrete, it just made sense to do it now instead of doing it later, so, and then as you can see, we're currently, this project's budgeted at, right at about a million dollars in the current fiscal year's budget, so we're well under that, that's another good one to see, so.
Nice change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, with that, unless there's questions?
I just, I do have just one, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just full of questions.
Oh, that's all right.
So when there is a change order, I know we often will see change orders coming from conservation on their product, projects. Do those change orders come forward to our board meetings with these types of projects too?
I mean, unless it's a large change order, generally, kind of the, how we operate is we, all of our projects have like a ten percent contingency built into when we budget for it, now when we get into a project that like, let's say the bid is right at budget or over, then that's kind of it depends on the change order, but generally just kind of the, the day-to-day things, whether it's a convenience for us or some, or something unforeseen that in the construction process. I usually make the determination on whether or not to approve the change order.
Right, but if it gets close to that budgeted amount or it looks like it's going to go over, that's when.
Correct, then we would, yeah, then I would bring it forward, it's been a while since we've had one at that level, I know that when we did the remodel of the Hazel Group home a few years ago, we had a few that I did bring to the board for consideration at that time, but generally you know, if it's within reason, within budget, I just make that determination.
Yes, you're saying it's within the scope of what was already bid, not a, gee, let's add something else on.
Correct, yeah, so if we ran into something that is not related to the construction of it, like, a lot of the change orders come into, like basically how, try to get, get too wordy with this, but yes, if it's like, hey, there's extra money, let's do this. That would be something I would bring to the board to get approval because it's outside of that, the scope of the project.
But I think the AI change order would come through on consent agenda or something, once that document actually physically changes the construction contract. We'd probably see it at that point. After Joby's given the verbal approval or.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? No. Matt, I'll take a motion.
I move to accept the bid award for seven hundred and ten thousand dollars to graphite construction for the Story County Sheriff's Range House.
Second, they moved in seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens, aye. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we have no departmental reports, other reports, we'd give discussion and direction for the two twenty, two hundred and tw- two hundred and twenty-one South Eleventh Street Storage Building Construction Cost Estimate.
Yeah. Wherever you want to sit. Okay, yeah, so you seen, we got, RMH has been working with us on this project, we kind of set out to get some basic schematic design and cost estimating. What it would cost to move the emergency management operation over to the two twenty-one South Eleventh Storage Street Building. And, you know, it's a billion, we're all aware, building we bought in lieu of building a storage facility for the sheriff's office and facilities management in the building was larger than our intended new building we was going to construct, so working through our space needs assessment, we're looking at ways to free up space in this building, so Melissa and I kind of started having conversation on, because we, in some of our original plans was potentially moving their operation to the Human Services Center, which wasn't ideal in an operations standpoint. We kind of wanted to keep them in the Nevada area, so then we acquired this property. Also with it kind of not just necessarily being, moving emergency management is the sole purpose, it was also trying to incorporate flex space for training purposes, you know, kind of a piece of this was in the original design of the range house that we just, you know, we removed about two thousand square feet of that project that was more of a training area for the sheriff's office, so all of that is kind of incorporated into this overall plan, so to speak, yes, I think we're all fully aware of the sticker shock that is attached to this document. But leading into that, a lot of that is associated with the EOC, there's new more strict building requirements when it comes to what they call an emergency operations center, what EOC stands for. Which that kind of encompasses many types of centers, like in dispatch center falls underneath that category, so basically the principle is, is in a disaster event, like a storm situation, you want to make sure that that center remains operable. Through and after that storm event, so that triggers the type of construction and then also kind of trickles over into just call it the utilities that feed that actual room as well, so there's some specific requirements when it comes to electrical HVAC and then like, communication systems that kind of have to be more robust, so all of that kind of rolls into the overall cost to take that facility and make it meet those building requirements. And that's with the EOC being an interior-built room from the surrounding existing exterior walls, so it's basically hardened walls, floor and ceiling. And then Melissa can kind of talk about the role that the Emergency Management Commission is.
So at our commission meeting this month, we had discussion about what the commission would be willing to contribute to the project. We have funds that are already within our budget, so we would not be asking for additional taxpayer dollars for this. The commitment they were willing to make was three hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to the project. We understand that as part of this with the hardening and the resource needs would be the need for a generator on the building. We have, Joby and I worked together and have secured some preliminary quotes that range anywhere from a hundred thousand to a hundred and nineteen thousand. Caterpillar, which is a current generator system that is used here in Story County, came in at about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And then any, you know, we could use the commission funding to pay for that generator cost. And then the remaining could be used towards the creation of our office space and then the, any any of the remaining funds could be towards additional cost to harden, but their total commitment that they were willing to make was the three hundred and thirty-eight five hundred. They were not willing to go out and ask taxpayers for additional money, this is money that's actually being taken from the disaster fund. We had a discussion in the commission meeting that FEMA is blocking a little bit at commissions incurring expenses for disaster response on behalf of a jurisdiction. They're having an issue with that in Greenfield right now, so there was discussion about diverting that funding into this project as it's a project that will really ensure the future of our office. As many of you have been in our space and scene, we are very much locked into the space we're at, we can't grow. The EOC space we have now is inadequate. If you get more than a handful of people in there, it is, it does become deafening. There's no mobility within that space, this new space would create that. And then also would help, as Joby mentioned, address some of the space needs issues that the county has determined, and also the commission would be prefers to have the agency kept within the city of Nevada and not move to Ames. And also that space, very much the size of that space would probably allow EOC operations and if this building would be unavailable, the county to still continue some operations out of that space. And we also could serve as, potentially as backup locations for Iowa State University and for Central Iowa Healthcare Coalition as well. The training space, the flex training space. We have, would have the opportunity to be able to host our county trainings with probably a pretty decent amount of folks with a dedicated training space that would have systems in place to be able to facilitate that training and record it. And then also would allow the county to host other additional outside trainings. That we get a lot of requests to host trainings for emergency management, different emergency management topics. That that space would also be, I believe it would be yet well utilized, not only by the county for countywide issues, but also for some of our external partners that are also looking for training space. So the equipment would be, would be used and exercised on, I think, on a fairly regular basis.
How many people do we know, like, do we guesstimate could fit into that training space according to this plan?
We're at two thousand, roughly two thousand square feet there, so I mean, we're showing setup for EOC in the twenty-four to twenty-five range, but I think from a, you know, in a classroom setting, you could probably set a hundred in that room, I would guess.
And the current EOC, the, all of the computers are out all the time, all the systems are set up, what, how, how will that work?
So what would happen is we would actually create the capability to almost create mobile setups. Joby and I have had discussion about putting the outlets and all of the equipment into the floor, so you could almost create modular training spaces. The room even potentially could be divided to create two smaller training spaces somewhere down the road. But, so the, so the room would not be permanently, have to be permanently set up like our current EOC is. Computers could be taken down and moved off if there's a training event going on. And computers are not needed, that's something that we can, we would be able to move those out of the way and set it up like a regular classroom. We don't have that capability in our current space, we're tied into that design we have, and there's also some, some hazards there. For either people catching a foot on something or pulling a computer off a table that we would probably that risk would be reduced to our equipment with going to the new space, so it would become very modular, very movable. Depending on what the need is in the room.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, because it's one of the scenarios we tried to take into consideration when designing this room is yes. Modular is realistic, and that includes the furniture, that we've looked at different types of tables that are easily folded up and moved off to the side, because one of the key components to the proposed training facility at the range house was the sheriff's office does have a need for when they do like hand-to-hand combat training. So we tried to make it to where you could roll out the padded mats, and as you kind of see, there's a long storage area on the east side of that, so that you could wheel those in, move the tables off to the side. All the utilities like outlets, communication jacks are in the floor. So you're not limited, like in the current EOC, it all comes from the ceiling down, so you, like Melissa pointed out, you're stuck with that design. So where you could easily move everything off to the side, have a big open room. You know, you could set it up classroom style where you just got rows of tables and chairs, so try to, you know, make it as multi-use as we could.
Is there, is there storage built in here? I'm not seeing storage in the part that would be the hardened space.
I mean, the intent we would due to it just being a basic schematic design, we didn't incorporate all like storage cabinets, and there is also a large number, if you all remember, of storage cabinets that are already in that facility, and we had intended on repurposing most of those to put computers, monitors, those kind of things that were lockable so that we could store them, lock them up, we just since it's a basic schematic design, we didn't get that deep into those furnishings, because we also have it incorporated in, because all of, the majority of the doors there are fire-rated doors, they're quality commercial door, and we're incorporating all, repurposing all of those that we could in this schematic design, so.
Kind of on that line, so on the south side. Where it shows the screens, I think that's where it has all those offices right now.
Yes.
Those offices stay or is that all taken?
Yeah, I picture this is, the building would have to be gutted, because
Okay.
As we've discovered in our demo demolition of it, a, a lot of the finished space in there just doesn't meet current code, so. There, we ran into the, that's why we kind of furnishings that we could repurpose is what we stuck with and not intending on reusing any of the existing walls or layout.
So, I think the the, the issue will be how to decide what should reasonably fall under Emergency Management Commission and what should fall under the county. And as Melissa said, the generator would be, we wouldn't probably be putting a generator in this building if we weren't having the emergency management or the emergency operations center there. So that's probably, the other thing is the hardening. And I don't know how you can, you know, in terms of an estimate or how even bidding it, how you do the hardening separate or how we take that into account. But it is going to be a significant, I mean, it's something we wouldn't, again, the county wouldn't be doing. But then on the other hand, there's going to be an A V system, which the county will use quite a bit. Emergency Operations Center would use it, but the county would use it for training as well. So it's kind of how you assess those things out and say, here's what seems reasonable for the commission to do, here's what seems reasonable for the county to do.
Yeah, because when it comes down to it, yes, we tried to, going into this in the onset, we tried to do that, Linda. We tried to make it, okay, it would literally cost this much per square foot to do this area. But given the special requirements for that E O C room and how it triggers other things, it's kind of hard to start breaking it out. Because like I said, it triggers how you do the other utilities that feed the room. So it was kind of hard to just take, okay, this part of the building costs this much per square foot. This part of the building costs this much per square foot. So we just kind of made it, you know, and then like you said, and then also looking at, it's not just emergency management using the E O C space, but the E O C space to be in E O C space has to be this hardened structure. So that's why Melissa kind of went to the commission and was just like, what is the most we're willing to help with this project?
How, how much of it is, is going to be hardened? Does it just that, the large room? Or does it include the bathrooms and the I T closet and the break?
Yeah, essentially that.
Tangle, the large room.
Yeah, that rectangle that's, yeah.
Okay.
Right there outside of the individual offices and what we call the reception area. So that whole center area is hardened.
Okay.
Because that's that part of when you, you got to protect the utilities. So like the I T closet and in, in that, those aspects also need to be able to withstand that potential damage.
Makes sense.
So this would take up virtually all the remaining space in this building?
Yes, we tried to, you know, because I tried to stick with as hard as we could because, you know, the original intent for the building was a storage building. And my operation has a need for storage and so does the sheriff's office. So I tried to stick with that original five thousand square feet per operation of storage. And we got them as close to five thousand as we could. They're, they're just a smidge under, but we are there. And so that kind of roughly left around six thousand square feet to incorporate the other pieces for emergency management. And then kind of a couple of flex storage rooms. Those are them, that southeast corner. Those are not slated for any particular operation at this point, but we wanted to make sure that we had some storage available for future needs as we go through this, addressing some of our other space needs issues. So.
So there's two other things I can think of that will, will have to be dealt with. One of them is the parking lot.
Yes.
And the other one is the storage building for the emergency management trailer.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah, and we, that's kind of a, we didn't include it here because it's a, it's a separate item that's on the C I P. But full disclosure that it's recommended to be when it needs to be reconstructed. Realistically, whether or not emergency management's operation is on this property, that storage building would probably go on this property based off of what it would cost to reconstruct that building in its current location versus what it would cost to reconstruct it, duplicate it and make it larger on this property. It would cost more to duplicate it in its current location. And we'd have, if we, if we sold the current property, once we built the new building, if we built a new building on this property, it could almost pay for the cost of the new building.
So that'll be a wash. Parking lot.
Potentially, yes.
Parking lot not.
Yeah, and we, and our plans for the parking lot moving forward is the parking lot, you know, because it's originally was a, at the South Eleven Street property was a grocery store and was originally built. So the parking lot is twice the size it probably actually needs to be. And moving forward, we would reduce the overall size of that parking lot and turn a lot of it back into just regular, so we don't have as much water runoff and, and stormwater. So, yeah, so I mean, so today what we're, we're at the point where we've taken the cost estimating and the schematic design as far as we really can. So to move forward, if the board wants to entertain doing this project, the direction we're kind of seeking is do we move more into an actual engineering and design phase? And as you can see, it's, those costs are roughly incorporated into the overall project cost. They're listed here and this would be, Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, is if the project went fully through the construction, you're looking at a total hundred and forty six thousand.
Correct, yeah, that would be all the way through to the complete construction.
Is that, yeah, that includes like construction administration. But Jeff might be able to kind of give a ballpark figure if we, to get us to a a more accurate construction cost estimate, we need to do more of actual architectural design and engineering on it.
Yeah, and really just to get to, I mean, again, we would do like a D D level estimate where we would have more of a complete set of plans that we would outsource to an independent cost estimator. So typically fee wise, we're in maybe the thirty percent maximum of total fee to get to that D D stage and have that estimate done. So, but we can prepare a proposal addressing that in more detail certainly. But that will help to refine that cost estimate because again, it's, it's pretty generic at this point, just on a cost per square foot standpoint, so.
And I realize how difficult it may be to say the hardened space costs something different. But I think a, a guesstimate of that would be reasonable for us to ask for.
Yeah, and I think our estimator can help with that.
Yes.
Easily to identify those additional costs.
Any other questions or direction that we want to?
Well, just the observation that if this were to happen, we were to move emergency management in the E O C over there, how many square feet does that free up in this building about?
I believe the office, the complete office space, nine hundred? It's about nine hundred square feet.
About the same with the E O C.
And the E O C, I think is just maybe a little bit less. I haven't looked at the drawings in a while.
Somewhere around the eighteen hundred to two thousand square foot range, not taking into consideration the hallway.
Okay, so that is something that can be, would be freed up for storage.
Yeah.
For other tenants of this building.
Yeah, because as we know, we've got, you know, we're utilizing areas of this building for storage that could be better utilized moving forward in growth. Because we, right now, nobody has any space to grow in this building. So the intent was to address our storage needs once we get through that mountain of digitizing files and what we, you know, and pinning down what all we have to keep on hand and how long and what offices need that. That would be the area of the building that we would use if vacated.
Well, I think it really helps us in terms of purchasing this building for the storage needs really helps in terms of looking at that space needs study that we had and doing everything within footprint of the buildings we have now or most of it, which is the less expensive way to do it. So I think this works well for that.
Yeah, and I'd just like to, we touched on a little bit in the beginning. As we dug deeper into if, you know, because one of the original concepts was moving the emergency management operation to the Human Services Center. Now digging into that deeper, that triggers a whole lot more domino effect of once you look at relocating general assistance and then, okay, where do you go? Well, then we got to start doing major work on second floor. Plus, I don't think that it would cost any less to do a build out of this nature in the Human Services Center in its current layout, based off of these new requirements for an E O C. On the surface, it looks like we should be good because it's half underground. But as we dug into the level of concrete that's the floor above it and then how the restrooms are laid out, that, yeah. So just figuring the, the cost to relocate that operation is going to cost money no matter how we try to achieve it, so.
I guess I just have one last question.
Sure.
And that's the, the two storage areas, storage one fifteen and one fourteen, the facilities and sheriff's storage on the north.
Yes.
Is that, have you, are you maxed out already? Do you have room for more?
Right now.
Adequate?
Currently, as we are utilizing them right now, the sheriff's office is using about three thousand square feet and facilities management is using about twenty six hundred square feet. And it is not adequate. So the five thousand square feet that's shown on this drawing that you see here, this is not, that wall that you're looking at is not the same wall that is currently existing. It's that divider wall right now, as we are utilizing the building, is a lot further north than what's shown on this. So we will grow those, yes, they the more the merrier, I'm going to say, and I'm trying, you know, yes, that I, you know, five thousand square feet for each operation is pretty good and should get us for a while.
Okay.
It would be awesome to have more than that, but I'm trying to find that balance of meeting other needs that we have in the county without adding on to the facility, so to speak.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't.
Yeah, and I don't know if Lenny's still here.
Short.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate you asking, Latifah, it's a good question. And really don't have a whole lot to add to Joby, just like any of us could agree. You can never build a garage big enough. Where we're at right now, it's, it's very tight, but we are much better off than we were a year and a half ago. So we appreciate that. Any additional addition to that will certainly be appreciated. It sounds like I agree with Joby, it will get us by for a while.
Okay, okay. Great. It'll be interesting to get more.
Yeah.
Information.
Okay.
You have kind of an idea what you're going to do.
Yeah, so just, so we're all on the same page, move forward with.
Forward.
Yep.
With design and more engineering and get us to a more accurate cost estimate for construction. Okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have discussion and direction on amendment with Colonesco School District and the American Rescue Plan Act Amendment and de-obligation of funds.
Good morning.
Good morning, Krista.
I'm here with representatives from Colonesco, Mark, and from the Y S S Kids Club, Nicole. And so we're here today to, up for discussion and direction. Colonesco has one of our ARPA, is a sub recipient. And due to the nature of their current programming with their Y S S Kids Club and the future programming estimate of having low to nonexistent kids in their program, they've come before asking, do, they're going to consider closing their Y S S Kids Club at the end of the semester in December. And with that, once all the claims have been submitted and run through, they have just over five thousand dollars that they would ask to be de-obligated. And so I'm looking for a direction on that. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
The current number of students that are participating in your childcare program?
We have four, I believe, that are enrolled, but they're on a drop in basis. So in drop in families just use the program as needed, which has been one time this school year.
Wow. And, and I think by your certification, you're required to have two teachers.
Correct, yep. So even if we, you know, have, it was a family of, with two kiddos. So even if we have two kiddos there after school, because of our H H S, H H S license, we're supposed to have, you know, more than one staff member there. So it's just very costly to, yes, maintain. And then, of course, we have like our monthly, you know, we have the cell phone bill that we're paying. And then we, the, the computer system that we use to keep track of our participants and emergency contacts. And that's how we bill the parents. We even have like a monthly fee for that. So at this point, we're just, you know, incurring costs that we're not recouping with tuition.
And you've done some other outreach to parents to try to get them to?
We did, we did some pretty creative marketing. I thought even last year we started because we, our numbers were higher last year, but they still weren't sustainable. So we marketed some stuff last year and offered, you know, discount and free trial basis and a special week with themed days and, yeah. And then this year, again, we tried to really interest families because of the late starts on Monday, the late start Mondays. And last year, that was kind of our busy day. And we don't have anyone attending even on late start Mondays this year.
Yeah, coming out of the last school year into summer, you know, we were optimistic and we just haven't been able to gain momentum and like Nicole said, we've done lots of different things from setting up tables of parent teacher conferences to sending out flyers, to offering a free month care. We just found that the need simply isn't there. And this was one of the, the big things I started when I first came on board. Based on our surveys, we really felt like there was a need to get this off the ground and, and things like that. And it just, it just hasn't, hasn't been what we had hoped. And, and, you know, we were able to serve the students last year and even through the summer. And, but at this point, we just don't have enough students to continue on long term like we had, we had hoped.
I think you did some very, very good work and learned a lot from it. And you're, you're quite right to say, we thought there was a need here. We can realize and step back and say the need's not here. So we need to, you know, close the program for now. And who knows, maybe some, some other day it'll be the right thing to do. You know, with more housing development happening in Colo, it might be in a few years that the program is needed again, and so you've got a foundation to build on.
Right.
So.
Yep, and we, Y S S partners with the school district and with other programs and stuff. So we'll still have, you know, regular communication and we'll be assessing the needs of the community in the school district.
I'd like to thank all of you as well, because I mean, it's, it's certainly not time or resources wasted. We, we were able to serve families and, you know, who knows with the new housing development, what could, what this could lead to in the future. And we'll have kind of everything, our ducks in a row and things like that. If we ever need to open it again, we'll have that in place. So thanks, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So my one question is, you're looking at closing, when is the looking at having it closed? Is it right when you're hitting Christmas break? Is it December thirty first?
We had talked about prior to Christmas break. So, and we can still offer, if there are families who need care over Christmas break, because we do have all day programming. We wouldn't probably be able to provide all day programming at, in the Colonesco District just because the staffing situation would be kind of a nightmare to figure out. But we can offer those families if they want care, care in another one of our districts. So for example, last year, like there was a family during breaks and no school days who would attend our Rule and Story Program so that they still have that option if they, yeah, need care during those days, but we're not sending two staff to take care of two kids in Colo all day long.
December twentieth is the date we're looking at.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. All right. So Crystal, you'll just have something on a future agenda?
Yep, we can write up the amendment to the contract and bring that back for.
Okay. Sounds great, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for your work.
Thanks.
Moving on, any upcoming agenda items?
I don't think I have any.
No, I will have a twenty eight E agreement on for the workforce. Not sure if I'll have it next week or the week after, just to let you know that. Now's the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments to the requirements open meeting law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment and you're in the public meeting room, please come forward. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. If anyone would like to make public comment in your, in the public meeting room, please come forward. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing then we'll close public comment number two. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin, start us off.
Okay, just a second. Got some meetings with staff on some ongoing projects. Of, I think, this afternoon, tomorrow and Thursday, and A D C Executive eating Friday noon and Monday. Meeting on homelessness and Conservation Board in the evening. So, kind of here and there.
Okay, Supervisor Basil?
Yep, I have on my calendar that there's a Bridge Home ribbon cutting this afternoon. I don't know if that's still happening or not, but and then Nevada's downtown trick-or-treat is tonight. Tomorrow is my first day with the AI Leadership Academy kickoff meeting, so looking forward to that. And then I am volunteering at the Mollaween event in Ames with Story County College Access and Story County Reads. That's tomorrow night. Then I have a couple of Zoom webinars on Thursday. Friday, I have my outreach catch-up breakfast with Greg that I might have to recancel, reschedule. Okay, good, that works out. It's your fault. And then yeah, that, that is it.
Okay, I have an ARPA meeting with Crystal this afternoon. Tomorrow, I have a Naco Healthy Counties meeting. Thursday afternoon, I have Central Iowa Workforce Finance Subcommittee meeting, and then I have a Community Excellence Advisory Committee meeting. Friday, I have D C A T, reminder that this weekend daylight savings ends, so we fall back. And then Monday, I have lunch meeting. That's it for me. If there is nothing else, I would take a motion to go into closed section, closed session, excuse me, pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one point five para one to evaluate professional competency of an individual whose hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and the individual's request a closed session.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye, we're going into closed session. Okay, we are back in open session. Their emotion?
I moved, we affirm the evaluation conducted in closed session.
Second. Moved in seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, or Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye, we are adjourned.